Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Whitehall City Council Meeting of Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024. Very much pleased to rise from moments of silence all by the bled of allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Odd, would you please call roll?
Dixon.
Present.
Brown. Elmore. Morrison.
Present.
Heck.
Preston.
Smith.
Preston.
Harcar.
Present.
President Potter.
Present. At this time, I'll take a motion to excuse the absent members.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse the absent members.
Second.
Thank you. There's been a motion by Ms. Harcar, second by Ms. Heck to excuse the absent members. Is there a discussion? Ms. Odd, please call roll.
Dixon.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
The absent members have been excused. Next on the agenda is the approval of our minutes, which include the August 20th, 2024, Agenda and Regular Meeting Minutes, as well as the August 27th, 2024, Agenda and Committee Meeting Minutes. This time, I would take a motion to approve.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Dixon, second by Ms. Heck to approve the minutes. Is there a discussion? Ms. Odd, please call roll.
Dixon.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
The minutes have been approved. We'll now move on to our standing committee reports, first being Administration and Financial Management. Chairperson Elmore is not with us this evening, but Mr. Morrison has offered to step in.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration and Financial Management did meet last week. Our minutes are on file, and we have three pieces of legislation up for consideration tonight, and we will meet again sometime after 6:30 next week.
Thank you. Community and Elder Advocacy, Chairperson Harcar.
Yes, thank you, President Potter. Community and Elder Advocacy also met last week. There are no drafts or pending legislation this evening. We will meet again next week sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. Community Standards and Enforcement, Chairperson Smith.
Thank you, President Potter. Community Standards and Enforcement also met last week. Our minutes are on file. We have no legislation on the agenda this evening, and we will meet again next week.
Very good. Economic Development, Chairperson Dixon.
Thank you, President Potter. Economic Development met last week. Our minutes are on file. We do have one piece of legislation for title only on tonight's agenda. Otherwise, we'll meet next week sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services, Chairperson Brown is not with us this evening, and Mr. Dixon has offered to fill in.
Thank you, President Potter. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services met last week. Our minutes are on file. There are no drafts or pending legislation on the agenda tonight, and we will meet next week sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. And Parks and Recreation, Chairperson Heck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We have no legislation on the agenda tonight, and we will meet again this coming Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. I'm sorry? Oh, I did. Public Safety, Chairperson Morrison, that was not a potential slight.
Well, I feel bad, too.
Ah, I understand it.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety did meet last week. We have no drafts or pending legislations, and we'll meet again next week sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. We will now move on to official reports. Mayor Vivins.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council, and everyone that's here and tuning in. From the mayor's office, I just wanted to inform council, I did have a meeting with Chief Crispin. He wanted to relay that he has spoken to his supervisors, and they have an open invitation to members of council that if you would like to speak to him as to any matter related to the FOP, related to any investigations, related even to the Ortega matter, you can contact Sherry, and she will schedule to meet with you individually, and you can not only speak with Chief Crispin, you can also speak to the supervisors that are over at the Police Department. Secondarily, I've received several public records requests as it relates to the Ortega matter, and our office has fulfilled them. I also would like council, as well as the public, to know that is a public record. In fact, my grievance decision is also a public record, so you are all welcome to see that if you so would like to or make the request. Secondarily, it was brought to my attention by council member Dixon that last week, or maybe two weeks ago, there were issues as it related to our social media policy. As you know, members of the public, we are a limited public forum, so we do have rules and standards as it relates to our social media usage. That being said, from my office, 100% First Amendment rights are sacrosanct. They are protected. They will be protected by my office, and I will make sure that every single person that administrates our social media policy understands the law and has the training and background to administer it properly. So, every person that is an administrator for our social media page, they are going through training. In fact, some of them have gone through training today. It was from an attorney named Mark Weaver called Social Media and the First Amendment. I believe you received a notice of that, too, Julie. And so, it is one of those things that training is important, and we'll train, 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 just so that no one ever feels that their rights have been violated or their First Amendment right to free speech has been violated. We will keep it as a limited public forum with certain rules, and that's how it's going to remain. And then, lastly, because this is the last council meeting that I actually get to say this publicly, but take a good look at her now. Just stare at her. Because next Friday, our own Casey Thomas will be changing her name, and as she will be getting married next Friday, so we don't have a... We don't have a full council meeting next week, so we wouldn't be able to get to announce it, but I just want to say in advance, congratulations, Casey. I think I called it, though. Think I was one of the first ones to call it back in the day. You know? Congratulations, and I'm looking forward to being there next Friday. So, that's it from me.
Thank you, Mayor. City Attorney Nick Ademus.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd actually, because I hadn't given numbers for a while, actually prepared numbers to give for residents, non-residents, traffic, and criminal cases, and then I left them sitting on my desk. So, I want to summarize. As I went through, summer's kind of a lull. I know some of our traffic stuff went down. We had a high around 180 tickets in the mayor's court in February. August is a little low because they're still putting it in. It's about 100 cases, so it ebbs and flows. On the criminal side, I've seen a little bit of an uptick in some of the petty thefts. Sadly, it's not surprising. Many of them are coming because it's back to school, so it has to do with children's clothes and supplies and stuff to get to school. When we get those, we reduce them to diversion because a lot of times it's under employment. There's food insecurity involved. So, we refer those to our diversion to try to get stabilization there, and our diversion partners have some resources that they actually help people get supplies for kids and stuff like that for school. Because I like data, I noticed that it still tends to trend that the majority of persons committing crime in the city are not living in the city. So, what I want to do now is I know our crime analysts at the Police Department have software where they can do hotspots, they can do heat maps, you know, the little map you see, it gets darker red for more concentrated areas. I want to work with them to see if we can do hotspots of trends of where persons from outside of the city are living that come in here to either commit certain crimes or just have the traffic offenses, because if there are other local areas that we might be able to have connections with or partners with, so we can try to reduce that crime by having them come in here if we have that outreach in their community. I know Reynoldsburg has programs similar, so people, and I'm not saying they're coming from Reynoldsburg, if City Attorney Shook is listening, but if they're coming from Reynoldsburg into Whitehall to commit a theft crime and then going back to Reynoldsburg, is that something, then, because we have a working relationship with them that we can work on to do that cross stabilization across the way and maybe, you know, reduce that crime element that way? So, I will be getting with the crime analysts. I'll be shooting them an email later this week to see if we can get something set up to try to do those hotspot stuffs and get some data, but that's just because I like data. So, and then I will try to remember my numbers for the next meeting because it has been a while, but they're sitting on my desk, so sorry. That's it.
I add for that, I thank you. City Auditor Quinzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I've mentioned before that the state of Ohio is doing our audit this year. We have been put on notice by the State Auditor's Office that they will not be doing our audit for fiscal 2024. So, tomorrow, I will be participating with them in an RFP presentation by four or five independent public accounting firms that want to come and take care of doing our audit for, I believe it's the next five years is the cycle. So, this will be a first for me. I never participated in one of these before, so it'd be interesting to see what they all bring to the table. Other than that, I just ask for favorable consideration on ordinances 73, 74, and 75.
Thank you, sir. That brings us to Director of Public Service, Ms. Thomas.
So, last time you say Ms. Thomas, I heard that.
Soon to be rattled.
Yeah, so next time you guys see me, my plaque will have changed. I am getting married in 10 days, so if you have anything, give it to me this week because I will be gone for the two weeks following. Other than that, nothing exciting, you know? Just gonna be somebody's wife, you know? Just somebody's wife, so I'm just asking tonight for favorable consideration on ordinance 075.
Your fiance is gonna give you a really hard time.
I know.
Thank you. Director of Public Safety, Greg is not with us this evening. That brings us to our Treasurer, Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council and all those who've joined us this evening. I have no official reports, so I'll keep it brief.
And that you did. So, there have been no official reports filed in the council office. This is our last meeting, which now brings us to Communications, Petitions, and Claims, where we have three items listed. Notice from Ohio Division Liquid Control for the transfer of a D-1, D-2, D-3, D-3A, and D-6 license from Bowl for Fun, Inc., DBA Holiday Lays, 4589 East Broad Street, Whitehall, Ohio, 43213, to Triple Shift Entertainment, LLC, 4589 East Broad Street, Whitehall, Ohio, 43213. We then have notice from Ohio Division Liquid Control for the transfer of a C-1 and C-2 license from Santiago Supermarket, LLC, DBA Santiago Supermarket, 4531 to 5435, Robert's Road, Columbus, Ohio, 4326, to Santiago Supermarket II, LLC, 1105 South Hamilton Road, Whitehall, Ohio, 43213. And our last item is the agenda for the September 9th meeting of 2024 for the Board of Zoning and Building Appeals. This brings us to our first poll public this evening. I invite everybody to come forward, and as anybody who's been here before knows, the rules are to please sign in, state your name. You've got three minutes, and...
Okay, so we keep coming back here to these...
Ma'am, I'm sorry, your name?
Say my name?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Devin Ortega.
Thank you.
All right. So, we keep coming back here to these council meetings in spite of being told that these meetings are for legislative purposes only, that there's nothing that the big council can do because it's all tied to the mayor's hands. Well, we've been reaching out to the mayor. We have been trying to contact him to get a response, and are greeted by nothing but silence, not even an automated reply email that says, "Thank you for contacting the mayor's office." Silence. You are a mark on the city's page with behave yourself robotic messages, which I'm glad that he addressed, and when we ask questions, we are accused of not living in Whitehall. While I have never lived here, my husband spent 16 years in the city, probably spending more time within its city limits than a lot of the residents. It was said in prior meeting that racism is like being in a dark room and receiving a thousand tiny cuts and not knowing where they are coming from. While that metaphor can be changed and to apply it to a lot of things, sometimes racism, discrimination, favoritism can feel like you are in a brightly lit room, and you know exactly who is cutting you, but you are being told that you are imagining the cuts. Sometimes these things can be married to gaslighting, and that's exactly the treatment that the Whitehall officers, including my husband and Ricky Ortega, have been subjected to under Whitehall PD's administration. The mayor is enabling these certain men to continue operating this way. He has enabled Mike Crispin and Chad Wilder to continue their favoritism towards officers who submit to their agenda of unethical policing tactics, allowing them to continue their dangerous disregard for mental health for Whitehall officers of ageist, sexist, ableist, anti-union, anti-LGBTQ, and anti-minority tactics. The mayor is allowing this by not performing the investigation. The chief prefers sheep. Has the mayor allowed himself to become one? It's a question a lot of us are asking. Last council meeting, he said that both the chief of police essentially forced him to have police security while in the same breath admitted that the decision was ultimately his. I don't know who is the sheep and who is the shepherd, but I do know that the people are the ones with the wool being pulled over their eyes. Discrimination comes in all forms. Mayor reminds you that Ricky Ortega is a Hispanic officer who was singled out, given a thousand tiny cuts, and is completely severed from the community and job he loves for performing union duties with the intention of protecting the officers he considers to be brothers. He came to the mayor for help. He trusted the mayor would do the right thing. Little did he know at the time, just had determined some people were to do the opposite. We come here because the mayor, in spite of him telling my husband his doors are always open, has posed himself inside of his office of mayor and is ignoring the fact that he is family and the community by claiming racism when it doesn't exist and turning a blind eye when it actually does. He was a lawyer, yet never questioned why a two-year-old survey, two-year-old disciplines, and a handful of contrived, unreliable, and out-of-context statements were putting up the flyer of man and not do the investigation that started the whole thing. Hank King, you were the cry for help, and you turned your back on him. You had Van Gregg interview the officers to test the waters until like 22. Why were these interviews not made public or even referenced in your press release? I'm in no position to tell anyone how to do their job, but I don't know. Maybe just do what you said you were going to do when you promised last Tuesday to do anything for the officers of Whitehall. Do better, please. Investigate Chief Crispin and deputy chief Chad Wilder. Thank you.
I am former officer Ricky Ortega. I'm here to speak on behalf of the officers of the Whitehall Police Department because they are not able to speak for themselves up here retaliation and termination. My termination started with their hope that the new mayor would lead to a positive change within the department. There was a rumor going around that the mayor was going to make things better. Once in office, he would make the change for the positive, that the officers in the city would once again become a great place to live and work. They were tired, they were stressed, they were angry, and eager for something to change. The rumor was believed by so many that on the day that the mayor came to do a ride-along, Chief Mike Crispin addressed Whitehall briefly prior to the mayor's arrival. He told us to be careful what we say to the mayor because he is a fixer, and if you complain about something, then the mayor will fix it, and it may have a negative effect on all the other officers. The chief paused for a moment in long thought before telling us that if we are one of the handful of officers that did not have the 12-hour schedule and complained to the mayor about it, that he would force him to change it, it would negatively affect the majority of the police department. The mayor, the day he came to do a ride-along, he got to witness a very productive day. Those types of productive days come at a cost to the officers working. It costs them constant scheduled changes where their days off are switched or split, their hours of work are changed where they have less than eight hours before they have returned, even though the standard accepted practice is to have at least eight hours before returning to work. This results in them coming in with little or no sleep and are expected to be more proactive than what I would dare say any other agency in the state of Ohio is. Those types of changes are standard practice in the Whitehall Police Department. The administration sees them as a vantage honor. Administrators do not have to worry about how many officers are working that day so that they can take another day off to rest or spend the holiday with their families or celebrate birthday or anniversary. They don't have to worry if any little thing they do will lead to the discipline that gets them terminated. The administration demands more from an understaffed police department than a department that has staffed with over 100 officers. The Whitehall Police officers do more with less and are continuously asked to do even more, to sacrifice more of their time at home. They miss out on school functions and milestones for their children. They are bullied into sacrificing their federal protective 12 weeks for their newborns just because the agency has a staffing problem. This is why the officers were hopeful that the new mayor would make a change. This is why they came to me asking, "What can the union do to help us?" This is why they were willing to be honest and open with the union administered wellness survey. They weren't honestly open with the focal survey. They were simply trying to keep the chief, the deputy chief, and the other administrators off their backs. They remembered that when they responded honestly to the chief's survey in 2021, they took such great offense to their responses, they compared them to McDonald's workers and said that McDonald's workers were held to a higher standard. That is why I met with the mayor in May. That is why I gave him a copy of the presentation, and that has ultimately led us to fire. I stood up for my brothers and sisters at the Whitehall Police Department. I took the risk knowing that I could retaliate against, but we all had hoped that the new mayor would make a change. Ask yourselves today, what have you done to make Whitehall safer? Are the officers in their best model state to provide top-quality service to the citizens? Do they have the right person leading them? If the answer is no to any of these questions, then it's time to conduct the investigation. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Brian Steele. It's not easy standing up here. Anybody that gets up here, no matter what side your aisle on, I always tip the hat to you. Good evening, council president, council members, Mayor Vivins, fellow community members. I'm here without my cheaters on, so it's gonna be a little difficult. I'm here to provide update and the latest developments concerning the relationship between the City of Whitehall and the Fraternal Order of Police. Unfortunately, I must inform you that the city has officially filed unfair labor practice against the FOP. This significant development underscores the ongoing tensions between the city administration and our organization. Mayor Vivins poorly received the billboard as his residence, which I understand. Again, the billboard was encouraging him to conduct a fair and impartial third-party investigation, which was failed to do regarding your chief's corruption. Additionally, there's been widespread concern within the community regarding the removal of the school resource officer from his duties protecting Whitehall students and their assignment, his assignment, to protect Mayor Vivins. When this body inquired about the situation, you were assured by the mayor at committee meeting last week that this was merely a rumor and the officer in question was not an SRO. Let me be clear. Mayor, I believe you to be an honest integrity man. I truly do. Unfortunately, once again, Chief Crispin provided you with false misleading information. It is a flat-out lie. Your bodyguard is a school resource officer that has been removed. Don't take my word. Do the right thing. Investigate. Find out by yourself, for yourself. Since his counsel does not typically engage in the grievance process and has been deliberately kept from such discussions, I will refrain from making the situation or my presence any more uncomfortable by delving further into that. I am happy, however, to provide you all with email copies of the officer's assignment, where he came from and where he went, in full transparency so you can see for yourself. If you do not wish to get any of that information, please tell me, and I'll take you off the list. I simply want you to know the truth. Lastly, I must express an ongoing concern that the union has still yet to receive any official communication regarding whether the concerns of our members and the broader community will be addressed. We also have not received any insurance that the mayor and this body support collective bargaining, support contractual union rights. This lack of transparency is deeply troubling, and I urge this body to clarify its stance in these issues. Today would be a great day, the day after Labor Day, a day that was built on the backs of union labor. It'd be a great day to discuss that. For those of you that look at me when I speak and are very following what I say, thank you. I do appreciate those of you that are attending today. Thank you for your time and attention to these matters. Your involvement and support are crucial as we navigate these complex issues. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Steele.
Good evening, members of council and members of the city staff. Hello. My name is Lieutenant Tanner Williams. I am a lieutenant at the Whitehall Division of Police. I am also a FOP union member. I'm here because I can no longer sit back and listen to one side of this argument come up here and talk to you. I'm not here, I'm not going to comment on Officer Ortega's situation. As far as I'm concerned, that is going through the normal process of now going to arbitration, which is spelled out in our contract like it's supposed to. There's nothing odd or different about that. Anyone who is fired from the police department, it goes through certain steps as it has to the mayor, up to the mayor's office, and then if the mayor upholds the disciplinary action, it goes through a grievance process, or after the grievance process, it would go to arbitration, which is exactly what it seems. There's nothing shady or under the belt about anything that's going on there. Additionally, I can speak for several of the members of the Police Department that we're not all miserable, and we don't, most of us do like working there. If we didn't, we'd go find jobs elsewhere. Right now, for those of you who don't know, law enforcement agencies all over the country are hiring, especially in central Ohio. We're not the highest paid, but I think we do have a family here at the Whitehall Division of Police, and I think people do really like working here, and that's why they continue to work here. It's been said already tonight that we do more with less. We have higher expectations than others, and that's true. We expect our officers to work hard. We expect our officers to provide the City of Whitehall with a level of service higher than what many other jurisdictions and cities expect. And that's because that's what you want. That's what the citizens of Whitehall expect of us, and we wouldn't have it any other way. Mostly, that's what I wanted to say tonight. You know, there's many of us that like working over there. There's many of us that support our administration, that support the chief's office, that support the vision of what this department is trying to do. It's a great time to be at the City of Whitehall. It's a great time to be a Whitehall police officer. Thank you to your support, your support, the support of the citizens of Whitehall for passing our levy, for getting us, you know, hopefully more officers here soon, for getting that new addition on the building bill. If you haven't been over there, you should come check it out. It is really awesome. We are very excited about it, and thank you. I know these council meetings have been very negative towards the City of Whitehall recently, and I just wanted to come over here and tell you that it is not as bad as they make it sound. Many of us enjoy working here, and we really do appreciate your support and the support of our citizens and everything they've done. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of council. My name is Lorena Lacy, and I am a member of the Whitehall City School Board. But I am here as an individual who has knowledge about the contract with respect to school resource officers and the Whitehall City School District. The contract indicates that we pay for a position. It is up to the chief of police to determine who it is that fills in in those positions. There has been some movement within our school resource officer position because of individuals being out for maternity leave and other things. And so, I wanted to come here tonight because I could no longer sit by and let the rhetoric that the mayor's security detail, number one, was pulled on the day that there was an incident at Whitehall City Schools where there was a Level 3 lockdown to protect the mayor. That is inaccurate. So, if there is a situation that the mayor is getting inaccurate information, those individuals who have posted that information on Facebook and those individuals who have spoken this evening to indicate such are incorrect. And so, I just wanted to make sure that everyone understands that what we're contracted for is a position, not a particular person, and it is the police department who makes the decision, who is assigned to each one of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to come forward?
Just a question. Second poll public, can I talk about a different issue?
Different, yeah, different topic, but nothing that you've already spoken to this evening.
But I have to wait for the second poll public.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Odd, would you please call roll? Mr. and each member of council, who's given a copy of each item of legislation, listed on the agenda prior to the meeting and including any add-on legislation.
Dixon.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to accept a motion needed regarding the conversation we had last week regarding council rules, which has to do with the timeline of when the legislation
and procedure.
Thank you.
I'll second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Dixon, second by Ms. Harcar, to accept the changes as discussed in our meeting on the 27th. Straight discussion. Ms. Ogg, please call Rolle.
Dixon.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Okay, that has now been made official. Now, moving on to our legislation, we've got no items for third reading, which brings us to our second reading, where we have several items tonight. First is ordinance 622024, which we read by title only, which will have a public hearing on September 17th, and a special presentation by the applicant on the 10th, which will be next week. And that legislation reads, allowing a special permit under 112504 to allow drive-in window and drive-through facilities on a property located on 3988 East Broad Street, parcel number 090000157, and 090005608, property owned by TCCI Broad Street, Inc., and declaring emergency. Our next piece of legislation, also by title only, is ordinance 722024, approving and making a fund transfer in the amount of $30,525 from unappropriate monies in the General Fund 101, the Medical Supply Fund 302, and making a supplement appropriation of $30,525 from unappropriate monies in the Medical Supply Fund 302, the Medical Supply Expense Account 302.000.50,000. And now on to first reading, we have several items. Ordinance 732024, authorizing and approving amendments to 161.38 and declaring emergency.
Mr. President, would you introduce ordinance 732024 and move for suspension of all rules?
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Ms. Heck, to introduce ordinance 732024 after suspension of all rules. Is there any suspension? Ms. Ogg, please call Rolle.
Dixon.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Morrison, also second by Ms. Heck, any discussion? Ms. Ogg, please call Rolle.
Dixon.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Ordinance 732024 has been adopted. Ordinance 742024, authorizing and approving a fund transfer in the amount of $75,500 from unappropriate monies in the General Fund 101, the Accured Benefit Reserve Fund 505, authorizing and approving a supplement appropriation from the Accured Benefit Reserve Fund 505, the Accured Benefit Reserve Expense Account 505.000.51,000, the amount of $75,500 and declaring emergency.
Mr. President, would you introduce ordinance, excuse me, ordinance 742024 and move for the suspension of all rules?
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Ms. Smith, to introduce ordinance 742024 after suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Ogg, please call Rolle.
Dixon.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt, second by Ms. Smith, any discussion? Ms. Ogg, please call Rolle.
Dixon.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Ordinance 742024 has been adopted. That brings us to ordinance 752024, approving and making a supplement appropriation of $90,000 from previously unappropriate monies in the Fleet Service and Maintenance Fund 313 by appropriating $90,000 to Fleet Reserve and Maintenance Expense Account 313.000.50,000 and declaring emergency.
Mr. President, would you introduce ordinance 752024 and move for suspension of all rules?
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Ms. Smith, to introduce ordinance 752024 after suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Ogg, please call Rolle.
Dixon.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt, second by Ms. Smith, any discussion? Ms. Ogg, please call Rolle.
Dixon.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Ordinance 742024 has been adopted. That brings us to ordinance 752024, approving and making a supplement appropriation of $90,000 from previously unappropriate monies in the Fleet Service and Maintenance Fund 313 by appropriating $90,000 to Fleet Reserve and Maintenance Expense Account 313.000.50,000 and declaring emergency.
Mr. President, would you introduce ordinance 752024 and move for suspension of all rules?
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Ms. Smith, to introduce ordinance 752024 after suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Ogg, please call Rolle.
Dixon.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt, second by Ms. Smith, any discussion? Ms. Ogg, please call Rolle.
Dixon.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Ordinance 752024 has been adopted. That brings us to ordinance 752024, approving and making a supplement appropriation of $90,000 from previously unappropriate monies in the Fleet Service and Maintenance Fund 313 by appropriating $90,000 to Fleet Reserve and Maintenance Expense Account 313.000.50,000 and declaring emergency.
Mr. President, would you introduce ordinance 752024 and move for suspension of all rules?
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Ms. Smith, to introduce ordinance 752024 after suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Ogg, please call Rolle.
Dixon.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt, second by Ms. Smith, any discussion? Ms. Ogg, please call Rolle.
Dixon.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Ordinance 752024 has been adopted. That brings us to ordinance 762024, which we read by title only, which is authorizing and approving expenditure of $49,000 from the Law Enforcement Trust Account 241-000-50,000 to purchase a drone as a first responder, DFR, to help combat crime and keep Whitehall safe. Our last piece of legislation this evening, also by title only, will be Resolution 252024, accepting amounts and rates determined by the Budget Commission, authorizing necessary tax levies, and certifying them to the county auditor and declaring emergency. That then brings to our second poll public, and as mentioned earlier, you can certainly come up if you already spoken, but it must be an entirely different subject, and if the same rules apply, sign in and state your name.
Brian Steele, President, FOP. Council members, once again, the lieutenant who represents management made a great point about issue 10, and it's something I wanted to talk to. The FOP supported issue 10. That was gonna build the new police building. As you know, it passed about 60%. We actually gave campaign finances contributions to support issue 10. Issue 10 promised the additional of six additional police officers. You were gonna go from a 54 officer department to a 60 officer department. Is there any update on if you ever fulfilled that promise? And if not, I'll take that in writing from one of your assistants, maybe.
Well, the only thing, sir, that I would say again, this is not present for conversational, but I would say that they are actively recruiting, and as the officer also said, it is tough out there to get people, but that is actively being going on.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay. Anyone else like to come forward?
Council members, I'm Detective Kobinski. I've been serving the city for over 10 and 1/2 years. I've worked with Officer Ortega, and I'm a FOP union member. I'm not here to talk bad about the union, and I'm not here to talk bad about Officer Ortega. What happens with Officer Ortega is handled in court, and that's how it is, okay? Mind you, every time I've heard one of these, we've talked about favoritism. There's no favoritism over there. It's people who work hard to protect every one of you that are city members, to make sure that you're safe and secure in your home. I busted my butt for over 6 and 1/2 years to get back to the detective bureau, where now I do the economic crimes. I try my best to do what I can to help members of this city. Also, the city also has three major roads that go through the city that have criminals and other people traveling through it that cause problems for this city, okay? Over a year ago, there was an incident in Columbus that Mr. Steele brought up. He has a video of a press conference that he did on the side of I-70, where he said that crime is, you know, at its high and it's only rising. So, call the mayor, call the police chief, and I think it was, I don't care, call the President of China. It's a problem. We are trying to hire more officers, but unfortunately, Mr. Steele went to social media and said, "Don't apply for the City of Whitehall until there's a new chief or new management." There doesn't need to be new management. There's nothing wrong with our management. Our chief wants us to work harder, to make sure that you feel safe and secure in your homes, and from any criminal activity that comes into the city. We don't have a quota, but we do measure people's, you know, their time through things that we probably should be adjusting, but the system that we have right now doesn't allow them. I do believe there needs to be a change in that, and our new system that we're going to, hopefully does, because we're community policing. There are other things where we go to disturbances, dog calls, things like that. We need to monitor those things, but we still need to go out there, stop the cars, make sure the drugs that are coming to the city stop coming to the city. We do need more officers, because yes, officers can't take off right now because everyone's leaving, because they believe that this is a bad department, but it's truly not. If you come in here and do your job, and that's to make sure, once again, that you're safe and secure, and we're making sure that through your tax dollars, that we've lived up to your expectations, to be better than any other police department here in the state of Ohio. You shouldn't go to bed at night and worry that someone's gonna break into your house or break into your car, or if you're gonna get into a wreck with someone that doesn't have a driver's license and doesn't have insurance. We do those things. The mental health of our officers, guess what? Our chief implemented that we go to the health doctor, Dr. Hope's office, once a year that we have to go, and go there for an hour. Everyone has to go. So, our mental health, there's things that we do to make sure that it's better. But if to tell me that you get overstressed by making traffic stops or serving the public, then maybe this isn't the job for you, because that's what you pay us for. You pay us to stop cars, arrest people, make sure people go to jail, and do what we have to do. I hope that you understand that everything that has to be done with Officer Ortega is going to get done. If he comes back, he comes back, okay? If the city or the court deems it. But understand that right now, we are hindered by a person and a union that is there to protect us, but then coming up here and telling you how bad it is. Let the courts handle Officer Ortega, and then we need more officers, and you're granting that, but we don't have it. So, mind you, we're doing our best, okay, with what we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Susan Smith, resident of Whitehall since 1996. If we're short-staffed on officers, why is this man sitting here out of office? He has helped do everything that that man back there has said that we need in this town, but he's not there to help. He has helped my family with multiple issues, personal, theft, traffic violations, everything that we're all short-staffed on here in this town. So, put aside everything that is going on in the grievance process and put him back to work. He's a good man, and he does nothing, means no mal intentions and harm to the city or anybody here. He's here to protect everyone, including me, you, the people sitting here, our school district. He's done nothing but benefit this town, and now I see his name jogged in the mud, and I personally don't like it. I don't think it's right, and he needs to be put back to work. His family is suffering at the same as our town. That's why I'm here.
Thank you. Anybody else? And we'll move on to committee day four. If you can, if you think I'm looking at you, you're right.
I have, the National Voter Registration Day is going to be on September 17th. The libraries, I believe it said 23 of the libraries, I don't know if that's all of them like in the area, but they will be having voter registration from 3:30 to 6:30 with the help of the League of Women Voters and the Human Services Chamber. There's also the Anquata dish Ethiopia New Year Celebration this Saturday at the Whitehall YMCA from 4 to 7.
Thank you.
Just to remind everyone that trash pickup is Thursday, not tomorrow, so save those trash cans for tomorrow night.
Appreciate that. If there's nothing else, move to poll council, and we will start with Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, President Potter. Thank you to everyone that is watching from home, and all those that made the trip in here, and those, of course, that just left as well. Devin Ortega, Enrique Ortega, Brian Steele, Lieutenant Williams, Lorena Lacy, thank you, Detective Kobinski, and Susan Smith, all for their words. It's a very complex issue, and I understand that. I want people to know that simply because they may not necessarily hear from me on this issue here and now, doesn't mean that it isn't being contemplated, discussed with others that need to have those discussions with, et cetera. And I, like everyone else, is trying to come to some sort of understanding and solution and everything else to that as best we are able. I would like to let the community know that I had sent an email last week to our city attorney, Mr. Nikodemus, asking him to clarify his position on our charter ability to launch investigations, and I certainly look forward to that, hopefully, next committee meeting next week. So, that's all I'll say on that topic. I would like to thank the mayor for listening and looking into my concerns about the First Amendment issues that I saw in last week's, and again, I believe it was last week's council meeting comments on Facebook. It was just concerning, because the thing is, is that people may disagree with us up here, people may disagree with what's happening, et cetera, but they certainly have a right to express those feelings. I, of course, you know, in polite society, try to keep it reasonable and not shake your fist at people and so forth and so on, and I would ask for that civility, but certainly people have a right to express themselves, and, you know, if you don't like it, then either do something about it or look the other way, as far as I'm concerned, in terms of criticism and so forth. So, people have that right. It's the First Amendment, it's certainly what the mayor served in the marines for, and it's certainly what all of us up here and others took our oath of office for, to, you know, protect the Constitution. So, I feel as strongly about it as the mayor does, so I thank him for his efforts in that movement. To Ms. Thomas, congratulations. I think the last time when the mayor mentioned it, he said you were finally getting mayor. So, the day has come.
Finally.
So, congratulations on that, and I'm really happy for you, and I hope everything, of course, goes smoothly.
I hope so, too.
All that. And I would just ask you, and I know this isn't question-and-answer time, but I didn't get a chance during your time, is anyone filling in for you for the two weeks that you're gone?
No, but.
Get all our questions in before.
Yeah, try to get them in before, otherwise it's just I'm ghosting everybody.
Okay, all right, just checking. And then, Mr. Nikodemus, if you wouldn't mind sending us the numbers that you had for tonight that you didn't necessarily have with you, if you wouldn't mind sending those in an email.[1696.83]
Congratulations, Ms. Thomas, on your upcoming nuptials, and everybody have a good week.
Thank you. Ms. Heck?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, everybody that's watching, and everybody that came in and stayed all the way till the end. We do appreciate it. We also do appreciate when people get up and speak. I know it's not easy to come up and speak in front of council, so I do appreciate that. And we do listen and hear, and most of us do take notes while people are speaking. I just hope everybody has a great night.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, President Potter. I share the same comments. Thank you to those that spoke. Thank you, Mary Perkins, for letting us know about reaching out to Chief Crispin. I will be taking advantage of that. I know, even as a person, that's a part of the process. There are so many questions, and so, seeking clarity before making a decision is something I always try to do. And thank you for reminding people about the public records request. I think that's been a question, is the grievance process private? Is it public? How can I get hold of that? So, hopefully, that will answer a lot of people's questions. Congratulations. I hope it's a wonderful day. I guess one piece of advice is try to just, as soon as it starts, ignore everything else. It will all work itself out. And thank you, Brian, for, you know, continuing to make the city attorney's office somebody who is proactive, not just reactive, so I look forward to that partnering with other cities to help people. I've seen a lot of people in my life who need a helping hand, and hopefully, that can make a big difference. And that's all my love.
Then, glad I thank you. Ms. Harcar?
Thank you. To our lovely audience that's still here, and to everybody that came and spoke, like everybody else has said, I know that that is not easy, but I really do appreciate hearing from everyone, so thank you very much for that. I feel like there's been a lot of, like, really great things that have been happening lately in the city, too, and so I want to take a moment to acknowledge those. Last week, I was over at Faith Lutheran Church. They do, the last Sunday of every month, they do a taco giveaway with Uncle Will's wagon. And Pastor Dan has been a friend of ours for a long time, many, many years. Before he went to seminary school, he lived in our basement for a little bit, but that's a whole nother story. But he opened up a baby boutique at the church. So, there is a small room in the back of the church now that has clothing for newborn up to two years old. I know it doesn't serve the demographic that we were talking about of individuals that are struggling to get school clothes and school supplies. I do really think that that's awesome, that they are given resources instead of one more barrier. So, that was really fantastic. The taco giveaway is the last Sunday of the month from five to seven. They will have the baby boutique open at that time, and people can call the church as well to schedule if they're in need of emergency items. I signed up for the Purple Run. I'm excited about that. If my son's swim schedule allows, I will be there, but I figured, no matter what, I at least wanted to make a contribution, which that is not until October twelfth, but that will be here before we know it. I also want to give a shout out to King Euro and to Yanni. I was over there with Mr. Morrison and quite a few members of the community. What day was that? Was that Friday?
Friday.
Friday night. He had a viewing party for the diners and dive. So, he's, you know, Whitehall was recognized naturally, because everybody watches that. That is a great show. And so, I just really am excited for Yanni and the entire team over at King Euro. They are just fantastic people. They give to all kinds of events. I've asked him for help numerous times over the years for different charity things, and so they're just really gracious, and their food's awesome. So, congratulations to them. That's it. Let's stop talking.
Thank you. Hard to top everything that's been said, which I certainly echo all everyone's sentiments as far as what they said, but I'd be remiss if I also did not congratulate Ms. Thomas publicly and wish her and her fiance, Nick, all the best, and looking forward to you having a wonderful time away and very all about when you get back.
Thank you.
If there's no additional business in front of this council, I'm going to have us adjourned at seven fifty-three.